January 5th, 2020, and we'll note that the meeting is being recorded. And we'll start with a roll call in our traditional way.
Alexis is present.
And Booth present?
About present.
Really present. Is that present? Oh, jumped again, sorry.
Very good. So we're at full strength. Thank you, everybody for joining us tonight. We will probably at various times ask Lori and Justin to call out folks who might want to contribute. When we get into our middle school education plan review and discussion. Before we do that, although it's not on the the agenda, in keeping with our practice, we'll ask for citizen comments at this point. Hopefully focused on our main topic for tonight, but that's not a requirement. We're going to look to the participant list here and see if anybody has a hand raised. And seeing none, I think we'll move on. Know that before we get into item two, the reports, the school building committee will meet on Thursday morning at 7:30. The Concord Finance Committee will meet Thursday night at 7:00 PM, and that's relative to a very first very preliminary look at fiscal 22 with the FinCom and with Mr. Stanton and Dr. Hunter. We are reaching out to Carlisle on behalf of the region to let them know that we're meeting with the Concord FinCom so that we have those connections firmly made with them as we as we typically do. And then for our school committee members, I want to note that we would like to add a meeting on February 2. It's an additional meeting on your calendar, and that would be for the sole purpose of fiscal 22 budget. And that will be first a regional meeting will look specifically at the regional forecasting for 22. And then that'll be followed by a Concord Public School meeting. This just came up today with the chairs and with Dr. Hunter details to follow. With that, I want to turn to our soul and really a critical topic for tonight, that is the middle school. And we're going to look at updates. I've mentioned the resumption of meetings this Thursday. And Dr. Hunter and I have a little bit more information to share there, but then we're going to get into the essentials of tonight. And that is to look at the draft of the education plan. The MSBA is a guiding source for us, although this is not a school building assistance program project, which brings with it certain advantages and disadvantages, but that's what is so. When we look at the MSBA and what they call out for an education plan, it reads that an education plan is to ensure that school projects are responsive to the educational needs of a district. And that the MSBA, although we are our own MSBA, if you will, requires the district to document its educational program and define proposed educational activities. Only then can the district work effectively with its designer, OPM, and local stakeholders to develop, evaluate, and select a design that supports its educational objectives and needs. Establishing a comprehensive and thoughtful educational program also helps to provide for future flexibility to adapt to changes in programming or teaching methodologies over the useful life of the school. This would suggest that this is a document that helps us prepare and set the table for a project of this magnitude, a project that we outlined at town meeting in 2019. But in point of fact, for a year plus, we have been working on the design with our OPM and with our design team. We know that they're with us tonight and certainly will be taking a major role come Thursday morning. So in the absence of the finalized ed plan, we do have plenty of data about what we do at the middle school, who we serve, how we serve them, who serves them, and what our program wants and needs are. And that data was sufficient to do a considerable amount of work. But it doesn't foreclose the need for an education plan. And that's why we're here tonight. So my my suggested approach for this evening, after we go over any additional updates on the project, is to get into the education plan that we have in hand now. And have Dr. Hunter share with us a few slides that I believe will highlight what she urges us to pay special attention to. Her presentation is not designed to serve in lieu of our own review. She's not reviewing the plan. That's our job, but instead she's going to present what she believes are some critical features she wants us to attend to. And that's as it should be. And then I want the school committee to be heard because we've had a few days to look at this plan and share with us your your broad and general opinions and recommendations. And then following that, we'll dive into the document itself because this is a critical week where where we want to provide any input we can that will help to refine the document where necessary. So that hopefully a week from tonight, this school committee approves the education plan. And I believe I won't overstate it when I say the architectural firm SMMA, the OPM Hill International, I think will be delighted to have a formal document. This particular one added to the dossier that we've been putting together for them so far. So I paused just to ask my fellow committee members, is that a format you think is going to work? For this evening, we need an approach for it, and that's what I would propose to us.
Yeah.
So Lori, you might have some notes here. I don't know. I don't want to put you on the spot in regard to project updates. What might we want and need to share this evening? We know there's going to be a lot following come Thursday when we hear firsthand what's going on, but you might want to give us some headlines or notes there. And I see that we have one of our co-chairs, Don Guerello, with us tonight as well. Don will certainly recognize you if you wish.
Sure. And I'll just do this at a high level where I would say still very much in the process of reconvening after having been away for, you know, the whole COVID period. So we had one meeting a couple of weeks ago that started that process. I really see tomorrow as a follow up to that start. So we'll be Thursday really honing in on timelines, on goals, on some of the cost and space issues, just naming some of our current challenges. SMMA will be really driving a lot of this because they've been really asked to take on the work of getting us from where we were. And I'll I'll give you a little bit of update of that in the slides I'm going to do, but where we were in April to where we need to be. And so we're we're trying to, this is a big driver to that information, is this educational plan documenting our our programming and what the building needs to be able to serve. And I think that's where we'll be. I think from there, the sub there are active subcommittees of the building committee that are going to really dive into different elements of the work that needs to be done next, which will be the design subcommittee that court chairs, the sustainability subcommittee, and then the communications subcommittee that Heather chairs. So that's the next layer. Once we have this meeting Thursday, those subcommittees are really going to take off and then be able to bring information back to the larger group. So I think that's where we're going to see next steps really start to evolve. So it feels really good. We're we're really starting to ramp back into gear here, and this is a great way to to do that with this ed plan in front of us. So.
On please.
Yes, thank you, Court. Hi, everyone. I'm Don Goriello. If you don't know me, I'm an architect by trade, but I am the co-chair of the Middle School Building Committee. And I guess it's worth pointing out that the, and I was glad you said this earlier, Court, that we had enough information with our professionals, both with SMMA and Hill to make great strides last year to get us to a point where we had sort of an idealized building that everyone recognized would be a perfect building. And I just want to point out that as an architect, it's important to know that this is a normal process to go through. And where we left off when COVID hit and we went on pause was that we were starting to make some of the tough decisions that bring the building to a middle ground that might suit the budget a little better. And so as we revamp, I think it's important to note that that's part of a normal process, and we're just picking up where we left off, but re, you know, re-recognizing the goals of the project, getting a better handle on the educational plan, which there were always parts and pieces of between Lori and Justin and recognizing how we were delivering education in Concord. It just wasn't formalized in this plan. So I think now that Lori and Justin have their feet under them with the school year going and have had some time to formalize it, that's what this document is. And that will only help us support the education better with space within the building. So part of what we'll be looking for is recognizing any spaces that can be shared and or dual purposed, and also recognizing the community needs, whether it's an auditorium or a performing space and what that wants to be and how that can support the education. But then also, you know, the gymnasium and is in a community space, and how does that support the physical education that's provided? So just so you all know, in the next few months, those are really some of our critical pieces of the next steps, as Lori alluded to. So sizing the building appropriately to find a balance between idealized and, you know, you know, what a minimum might be. We want to balance all of these different pieces to really bring this project in at a budget that we all are comfortable with.
Thank you, Dawn. By way of catch up, we have had meetings on November 19th, December 9th, and December 10th, which are part of the public record right now. The first two meetings were meetings of the design subcommittee where Charlie Parker and I presented one form of an analysis of the design then in hand, which might suggest to you the kind of modeling and analytical approaches that we'll use for subsequent design work that comes our way. The December 10th meeting was the startup meeting of the of the full committee. And I think it would be fair to say that that startup was declared not complete and will continue that process come Thursday. So with that, I think we will get into our ed plan itself. And I will ask for your help in time management tonight. I'll help. I'll ask for your help in recognizing people who wish to contribute as we go along. I do want you to know that many people have many opportunities to weigh in on this. Tonight is the school committee's primary opportunity to weigh in on this with the expectation that if all goes our way, we'll have a formal approval a week from tonight. So we will guard our time carefully, but we will not prevent contributions and questions from others. We'll welcome them with a caution about the time that we're going to try to use to best advantage. I'm going to simply call us, call us out, the five of us for general comments about the draft document. And I repeat, it is a draft document. Dr. Hunter and her team of authors on this, I think, recognize that it's going to be a busy week to get the collective input they're looking for so that it can be refined to the degree they want, so it comes back next week. And I might simply go alphabetically. Alexa, any general comments you'd want to make before we dive into specifics on the content areas? And you're on mute, Alexa.
Sure. I think the things that stood out to me that I just want to make sure are the most important things as we consider this plan as it relates to sort of translating that into a a building. The emerging themes that I saw that I think, I hope, are what are being considered are the need for flexible spaces. There was, for example, like reference to an engineering lab doubling as a maker space, really focusing on keeping the teams together. So that, and I think Court and I actually talked about this, like making sure that we understand the benefits of that with respect to both how that those team, that team structure benefits both students as well as teachers, because I think there's real meat there that maybe could be fleshed out even more. And then I think in terms of as the way our learning relates to spaces, I think there was a lot of talk about cooperative learning and therefore translating into those sort of flexible kind of malleable spaces. And I mean, those were the themes that I thought were really what needed to be translated into design. And I hope that that's achievable.
Thank you, Alexa. Heather, can we move on to you, please?
Um, yes, I guess I actually agree with everything Alexa said, and I had some high level thoughts on kind of what we want to pull out as the most salient messages from this. But I actually would rather comment after we go through it than before.
Good. Yeah, okay. And that's going to be our process too, to do a wrap at the end. So that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Fatima, could we turn to you? You're on mute at the present time.
Yes, I concur with with Heather too. I think I would prefer to wait until we go through the document to share my thoughts about it. But I do want to thank everyone who has worked to put this document together. Yes.
Good. Thank you. And Cynthia?
So I think most of my things are questions. And again, I probably might be answered during the presentation, so I don't want to take up time before it.
Good. Okay, thank you. My my one comment at this time is that I want to advocate for a very robust, very informative, very inspiring piece on the benefits of the team approach. Our analysis of the the most current design suggested that we exceed the building size and cost of other districts significantly. And perhaps about half of that difference is attributable to our team approach. And thereby, this gives us an opportunity to really defend what what a premier marquee kind of middle school can look like if we do a really superb job of presenting the team approach and why it's going to require what it requires. I think we've got room in this education plan to improve on that piece of the the presentation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
I don't know who this would go to. Is this team approach common? Is it unique to us? Is it? Is it something that's really important for like this demographic of kids, these like little kids, these in between big and little kids? Like, I think hearing some perspective on that, like, is this so unique and so important to the way we're delivering our curriculum to kids that it's just a really prioritized way that we have to look at the design? And if so, what are the benefits of it?
So educational philosophy, pedagogy, and emerging trends around this. Dr. Hunter, Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that question. That's a question I'm very passionate about. If you, you know, switch Google from Google and make it Google Scholar, you know, there's a lot of peer reviewed research on the importance of what a middle school philosophy is. If you don't team in the middle school, you have a junior high school philosophy. But I guess I would underscore the importance of teaming and the fact that many high schools are now looking at teaming, including our world-class high school at CCHS. You know, they went, the teaming model is the ninth grade academy model. So I really think in terms of, you know, everyone in Concord who understands the importance of teaming, you know, it's as much of a district approach as it is a Concord middle school approach, and it's not unique to Concord by any means. You know, I think the harming and teaming, you know, is when it's not done properly. And that's what Concord Middle School, you know, that's what we're looking to fix within the margins that we currently have in the two buildings. And we're doing everything we can to do so and not wait for the new new building.
Gosh, I'm going to back you up a little bit. What is it? I think that's what I heard Alexa say. What is it? We know what it, you know, we know what it's like, we know what it's not like, but what is it? How could we best describe it? What? Because whatever you say, we're going to echo it on the street. Can we capture it?
So it is building relationships, you know, middle school. Middle schools are founded upon relationship building. And the research that is quite striking in saying that a student will excel and thrive in their classes if they have a meaningful relationship with the adults who lead the learning. And when you keep students in a team or on team, you have the opportunity to develop relationships that are very sincere and authentic with the adults on that team, the world language teacher, the science teacher, the social studies teacher, the math teacher, and the English teacher. They all build relationships within that community or that team. And again, the research is quite clear that, you know, when the student is being led by an adult and there is that rapport and that connection there, that meaningful connection, then they will thrive, you know, in their learning and their development of the whole child.
So in a in a school with this model, we could assume that 80 to 100 kids share four or five teachers. And the feature that's unique is this structure supports sustained engagement between those children and those teachers, unlike schools that don't have this model.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
Please.
So how can we evaluate? How can we assess what this team approach brings, the relationship, the rapport between the students and the teachers? How do we assess it? How do we justify the money that we're going to spend on the additional space that it requires? Do we know, for instance, that it's going to go from point A to B? Do we know where we are right now in terms of that connection? And what are we looking to achieve? And how do we assess it? How do we justify that that spending?
So the most profound indicators that the research shows, then, would we call out social emotional health? Would we be calling out academic prowess? Would we be calling out happier kids, more capable of avoiding adolescent risks? What 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 comes up to the surface in the research there?
All of the above. Again, you know, we have a great amount of resource, research, rather, you know, in you know, some surveys that have been taken, the youth behavioral risk survey out of Emerson Hospital is one that we can compare ourselves in, in where that survey was. You know, I remember part of my transition into Concord five years ago was looking at said research and looking at the relationships, you know, students being surveyed at Concord Middle School. You know, this was probably 2016, 17, you know, and their connections, the connections that they felt like they had with the adults. And before my entry, you know, the faculty and staff upon the shoulders of the good people you see in in this meeting, you know, took it upon themselves to build an advisory program that's going to be mentioned in the presentation this evening called Home Base, where, you know, within your team, you're also brought and given an advisory group of about an adult and about 12 students that forges that relationship. So the data that we have to compare from that data, the youth behavioral risk survey out of Emerson Hospital in 2016, 17, that data has shifted dramatically in the data from the same survey and other surveys that we have taken with our students as well.
And that's been a very useful self-reporting since I think we issued our first one in 1996. So we've got a quite a history with it, maybe even prior to that.
It was prior to that. I took it.
Yeah, okay, there you go. Yeah. All right. So, Dr. Hunter, I'm noting the time. We're at about 5:30. And I want to see what we can do in about 20 minutes, if that's possible, so that we've got time to dig into the document itself.
Okay, so let me just screen share here. So I've put together a few, some, you know, opening contextual slides, but then much of this is really based on, you know, I was calling it the 30,000 foot view of the, you know, long document, but it's probably the 50,000 foot view of the long document. So invitation to the educators that are on with us to chime in at any point if they think there's a little more detail required. So, and they know I've made that invitation earlier. So I just wanted to frame a little, some of the people that are involved, because it's actually not all that frequent that the two groups all in the same place. So I just think there's some new school committee members, and I just want to name some of the people that are the professionals and otherwise that we're working with. So the owner's project manager on our project is Hill International, and some of them are on the call. Our design team is coming out of SMMA, and you and Cole, some of them are on the call. They're here to answer questions as appropriate, be resourced to us, listen to your feedback, obviously. So it can be their passive or active role as as needed. Co-chairs, Tim Holt is actually going to take a step back later this week, so we'll be filling the second co-chair, Dawn. You've already spent some time with this afternoon. There it's a 17 member committee, so I did not put everyone's name on here. It's a large array of stakeholders and community members, some representatives from the town professionally and otherwise. And I did call out Stephen Crane as town manager as being part of this. It is it is a town project for sure. Just quick tie line, I'm even going to go through this with you since Court did a lot of this, but just how we got to where we are. The part I'll name is a reminder is really we're out of place, as Dawn said, of trying to take the, you know, ideal and get it to the reality of what the community will be able to fiscally support while we sustain and maintain our programs and vision for the future. Court mentioned all of this about the educational purpose of the plan, so I won't go through that again. But I think it's just important to note, this is a document that, you know, we're going to get to a a good place over the next week. But if things change over lengths of time, it may need to get But if things change over lengths of time, it may need to get brought back out again. Education, as we've all learned, the last, you know, nine months is not stagnant. But of course, it was even not stagnant in normal times. And we would just want to be sure this plan is reflective of that. Should major things need to be edited or changed? It's a, it's a living document, not one you want to just file on the show. In, in the educational plan, we do open the document up with referencing really the anchors to all the work that we do, which are the strategic planning objectives that I've listed here. The middle school has its own core values, which parallel with the districts or complement the districts really. So I just pulled those out again. I think I can hear in your questions already that we're already starting to really tap into some of these topics. So it's just important to remember that they are our driving themes. I'm back two years ago now, at least, you know, two years ago, I guess, three years ago. Boy, time flies. We did some visioning work prior to the building committee coming together with a mixed group of teachers, parents, students, staff, and a consultant, and this is where we landed. And this has become a valuable piece of the work that we're doing now. I think you'll see themes again that all parallel and match and fit everything we've been talking about. Some of the questions you've already asked are already named and listed here as, as core principles going forward. Nope, sorry about that, it's not letting me. There you go. So in the plan, we highlight, and I did not put all the numbers in here, we can get as deep into this as you want. After quite a bit of work on enrollments and projections and current numbers, as a leadership design team, we brought to the building committee a recommendation to work with a 700-student number. We're currently at 684, somewhere in there, Mr. Cameron. And so we believe the 700 gives us a little room for incoming growth if we should get it, but not to overbuild. So that's always the tricky balancing point you're trying to find. So just so you know, that's the frame of reference we're using right now. Class size is always a piece of the discussion and especially as we talk about the teams and the split down to the grade levels in a moment. Approximately right now, it's about 21. With our vision of three clean teams per grade, it would go down some. Again, I think in my mind, that has grown comfortable that if we had some incoming kids, that would allow us to absorb them without great angst. Right now, there's one clean team at the PBD building for sixth grade. And by clean, I mean the teachers only teach one grade level. They teach that group assigned to them of, say, 80 to 100 students. We have split teams, and this is some of the detail Mr. Cameron's talking about trying to fix. So that teachers right now, because of how we're structured in space and such, we have some teachers teaching two different grade levels. So we say we're teaming, but they're actually across two teams, which does negate some of the benefit. So the goal really has become moving to three clean teams so that that piece you've just started to talk about, as I outlined here, really starts to allow us the benefits of that. So the core subjects being the anchors to the team, the four core classes. You've mentioned these, you know, teacher knowledge of kids, the community among the kids, sense of a smaller school. And I, you know, as Justin mentioned with the transition to ninth grade, it's been the same for the transition to sixth and the benefits of the team there. We can, we will flesh this out in a lot greater detail in the plan. That's already been feedback I've gotten and we're happy to do that for sure. Justin just referenced Home Base and there's some information here in terms of the goals of that program. It's a very robust advisory program, well beyond anything I've ever seen in a middle school or in a high school, frankly, and anchors the building. And the kids are very established in their small groups. I know we've had feedback as we've been talking on this ed plan that it's going to be important to make sure that space is available for all these small groups to meet. It is a good number of small groups because kids are broken down into, you know, 10 or 12 at a time. Doesn't mean it has to be a, you know, perfect space or full classrooms or anything like that, but we do need to be sure we've thought that through. Shifting gears, and this is why I want to be sure you under, you know that the, some of the folks on the call with you are actually the experts we brought in to author a lot of this plan. We did not write it by ourselves because that would not be a well-written document because we need the leaders of our content areas to really help us with that and document the really strong, robust programming we're offering to our middle school kids. And I think you just want to keep that lens on because the depth of our programming is very much what's driving the space needs. There's no question about that. So the department chairs are all on with us tonight and here to answer questions as you get into your discussions either now as we move on to the more Q and As portions. So I'll just first reference English Language Arts and Literacy. That, you know, includes obviously reading and writing. And really, the, the focus of the plan is not specifically curriculum in terms of content, per se. Of course, we've mentioned some of that. But really what you're trying to capture are the methodologies, pedagogy, practices, the how we do it or want to do it so that it will inform a building design. So what you're going to see me reference here is having kind of pulled that out of the plan as a highlight for you. Student-centered class discussions, readers and writers workshop, which is when kids are working independently or working with partners and teachers are conferencing with kids or small groups of kids, a combination of whole and small group, very flexibly. The English teachers felt really strongly, we highlight their desire and current use of performance in terms of a way to express drama, literature, et cetera, and their hope for some ability for small performance spaces and, you know, a real flexible classroom environment where that can be, be maybe not a huge, everything from a big performance down to something where just a small group performs for the rest of the class. I'm not going to get into intervention and enrichment because there's more detail coming later in the pro, in the slides, but it is important to note the, you know, we, we do have a lot of that going on, especially in ELA and math, and we wanted to be sure to note it here. In terms of math, heterogeneous groups have become our mindset. Sixth grade was moved to unleveled groups this year. So classes are not done in sectioning by level anymore at sixth grade. We are proposing and moving that forward to seven and eight for the fall, which really drives the need that we're going to be differentiating things. That will really create whole and small group and individual work in a really fluid way. Manipulatives are always part of math, especially as we go from the transition from fifth to sixth and they're coming into everyday math, which they've been experiencing K5 and now continuing six. So, you know, we're going to want to be able to really have a classroom that can ebb and flow with all of these different approaches. In science, which probably seems like one of the more obvious ones to the outside, you know, layperson, clearly we're driving curiosity and exploration, individual and cooperative learning group work. We want to be hands-on and inquiry-based, we are. Engineering is a piece of this, which is, I think, has already come up as some, you know, we need space that allows for crafting and designing and creating. The scientific process is also a key anchor to this. Kids are actually, you know, hypothesizing, experimenting, and then recording and data analyzing and drawing their conclusions. So space needs to allow for all that. Social studies is a combined set of structures, some lectures, some large group discussions, some collaborative group work, research being a core piece of it. Strengths in student presentations and displays of student work so that they're able to share with each other. Technology will often be part of those presentations, so we want to be sure that's considered. And I really enjoyed that they included their, their anchored enough in mindfulness as a department to name it out here. And I think, you know, to, to know we need to create a setting that has that range of flexibility is, is really great to see. That doesn't mean others aren't doing mindfulness, it just was worth, was noted as a common enough practice across social studies. This is where we leave those four core content areas. And I, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about word language almost being considered a core content area for us because the program is so extensive for a middle school that kids really are immersed in language and garnering proficiency and skill sets unlike anything I've seen in other middle schools. So Spain, we offer Spanish, French, and Chinese. It's worth, you'll see from here on, I start to reference some of the time allotted to these because if they're not every day in the rotation, it's worth noting how much of the time and they are in the rotation. Just because that also will drive space needs as well, of course. Grade six is four and seven and eight is five. Very specific world language instructional strategies that the district has supported and sponsored and provided training in. Courtney's here, if you want to know more about what these are, the owl circle, which is a real active way kids are up and having lessons and discussions with each other and then comprehensible input. While they're also using games, they have classroom libraries of second language texts and lots of visuals around the room that become anchor charts for kids throughout the teaching experience. Something, you know, one of the goals of the district and the middle school has been really to build a, a strong response to intervention program. As school committee members, those of you who have been for school improvement plans and such, it's in the strategic plan, really building that regular education intervention for kids who need it, whether it be academic or social emotional. Justin's worked with his leaders and team and teachers to build a schedule that allows for a block to be assigned to this right now at grade six, especially where they've done it the most. So that kids really can provide, get this in a really quality way. I think that's been one of the struggles that's often the case at the secondary schools is just how to get it to work so that kids aren't missing other things to get help in something else and you're not trading off while you're trying to, to support kids. So some of our strengths of the program that's growing and will continue to grow is that the core teachers are providing intervention. We have the, you know, certified licensed experienced teachers doing a lot of our intervention work rather than sometimes it's support staff, per se, and not, those people aren't available. And we, Justin's worked very hard to make these folks available. It is a second setting of the same, of the same content. So they're not get, they're not missing math to get RTI in math. They're double dipping, getting art, getting RTI in addition to their math classes. And that's really important because that's how you actually close gaps. And obviously, we're very data-driven in how kids are invited to these programs and how long they stay and what they need.
All right, could I just add?
Oh, by all means, please.
Thank you. And, you know, they're not missing music class or E class or an R class, which is typical in a lot of other schools. And they're going back to their core teacher and that license to get either intervention or enrichment in the area that data suggests they need it. Instead, what we had in place before is a mad rush for special education eligibility and massive numbers in special education, which comes with it a great cost to the district and to the taxpayers. So an RTI, a robust RTI program is the gateway to special education. And quite frankly, there's a ton of research that suggests it drives the special education numbers down significantly.
In our data with document that we're making, making that progress. I know Kristen popped in here, she's applauding us while we talk because this has been such a long-term goal of hers. So it's been a real district strategy to, to build these programs. The response to enrichment allows for kids who don't need the intervention to have choice and elect interest-based topics. Some samples are in the ed plan. It's a really fun list of really intriguing things that make me want to free myself up to take some of them if we could. So that's a unique piece to conquer in middle school. I have never seen a response to enrichment program. And I think we are working just as hard to serve all students as we are those who need intervention or special services. Other means of student support, and I really kept this without detail to it on purpose. Guidance obviously supports kids in many, many ways, whether it be lunch groups or individual services or supporting teachers. We do have English language learners at the middle school. There's a full-time English language learner teacher there doing a combination of push-in or pull-out depending on the student needs. This said, resource officers, and what I really want to highlight is that we have one full-time school resource officer assigned to Concord Middle School. So that needs to be a component of this new space. And Metco is obviously a key, essential valued component of the middle school. So we have support staff and teacher time allocated to the kids coming out from Boston as well as a director, K-12, Mr. Nimitz, who spends some of his time there. Teacher planning is highlighted in the ed plan because, and I think this has been some discussion among the design subcommittee and at the high leadership level, it, it is how you try to figure out what you need for spaces. Just some context then. Our teachers, based on, to the CTA contract and our typical practices, they will be with students five of seven daily periods. Right now, they're preparing in their own classrooms across two schools. We have plenty of space. It's not great, you know, it's not great space, but we have plenty of it for them to have their own classrooms and be able to do that and prepare in their own rooms. That does allow, obviously, for them to prepare with their materials available to them. They can set the classroom up before kids are there. Kids get into a lot of routine because they're coming to the same classroom all the time. There's, there are definite lots of benefits to this. They also spend time meeting with colleagues. The classrooms are often used for those meeting spaces. And I, I don't know how much discussion we can get into this tonight with all of you because it's such a moving topic across multiple groups right now. But this is a current discussion in the design process. I get, my frame of reference to all of you is that if you're in an MSBA project right now, teachers are essentially told they're not getting their own classrooms and they get common prep rooms where they get a, you know, cubicle, usually some common space for a table to have meetings or eat lunch or whatever. And there's some really great opportunities for collaboration when they're together, et cetera, et cetera. What that allows is for the classrooms to be used almost every period because teachers are rotating in and out of there. That obviously has positives and cons. The plan we have right now has positives and cons. And this is part of what we're trying to rectify from Dawn's words of ideal to realistic. And how do we come at it to go from ideal to realistic without compromising too much or while we make conscious choices of what we're compromising? So I'll leave it at that, more to come on. This is going to be a large part of what SMMA is working with us on as we go back to reconvene the building committee, both this week and into the subcommittee meetings.
Laurie, I apologize, I don't want to interject often here, but I think it's germane to this slide, something that I've been struggling with. This question, in the, in the team or the hypothetical team with four core teachers and they're teaching four cohorts within their team in their subject area, is there an effort to schedule also times each week and places each week where those four teachers get to come together? Or is it more catch-as-catch-can? Is it, is it baked into the schedule?
Absolutely baked in. Justin, do you want to give him some examples? Because we, we do this now. This isn't just a vision, this is reality now.
Yep, and the reality has it, if, you know, if you walk to a team leader is what they're called, formerly known as house leaders, but we call them teams now at Concord Middle School. In their schedule, they meet with their teams, sometimes up to two times a cycle. The world language teacher, often if available, is a part of that meeting as well. And almost as important, the special educator on that team and the guidance counselor on that team as well. In a seventh-period block, that could be their seventh period that that team leader is in his or her, her room having that meeting. Now, they're in a classroom having that meeting in the current configuration of what I'm sitting in right now, which is Sanborn, because we don't really have any meeting spaces. But I want to go back to what was just said. If you back that up, that could be the seventh-period block. The sixth-period block could be a study. The fifth-period block could be an intervention class, and then the four core classes. You know, our occupancy right now for some of our core teachers You know, our occupancy right now for some of our core teachers, including world language teachers and others is their rooms are used almost every period of the day.
Justin, if I could just jump in for one second too. I'm just hearing a lot of talk about the four core teachers and I just, I do want to acknowledge world language and the fact that admin has done an amazing job of trying to schedule world language teachers so that we can also be on team because being an academic subject, it's really essential that we take part in those conversations and that we are also considered to be on team. So I'm just hoping that, you know, as conversations continue, that maybe we could shift our focus to, you know, the five core classes because as world language teachers, I know that we consider ourselves to be a core class.
Courtney, thank you. Well, well said. Thank you.
Could you just introduce yourselves? Everybody knows.
I'm sorry.
No, they're gonna, they've guessed already, but let's do it formally.
I'm Courtney. I am Courtney Swicki. I am the chair of the world language department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. And for, for anybody just dropping in for the first time to this kind of meeting. The reference to rotation means a six-day middle school cycle each day comprised of seven class periods. So when we use the word rotation, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what we're talking about.
That's correct.
And just a quick clarification question. Courtney, thank you for bringing that up. Earlier on, Lori, when you were talking about clean, three clean teams. Have, I think the answer is we're not sure yet and working on it, but the definition of those teams at this point, does that include the world language teacher or?
Yeah. So I mean, I'll give you some of the backstory of sort of where we've been. The tricky part with world language, we agree with all that Courtney just said, the tricky part with the logistics of world language is that we're driven by the, the, the choice of language kids pick. So for example, the Chinese teacher teaches more than one grade. So her to be on a clean, only teaching one grade of kids, the way the other teachers would be isn't easy or possible necessarily.
Right.
So it's, it's more just a function of how world language works. That's the next discussion to figure out.
Yep. I do, I have to give a shout out to Olive though, because she did do an amazing job this year with trying to get, you know, Jennifer, even though she teaches one section of Chinese, she kept those kids on one team. And it just helps, you know, when world language teachers are scheduled on a team because then we can attend the meetings.
Yeah. So we're, we're making progress, which is good.
This is in the sixth grade clean team. Is that what you're referring to?
So, you know, right now, again, world language is a little different. Let's go back to the definition of clean team because I did hear Dr. Hunter earlier say, you know, and excuse me in naming it this way, but it's actually part of the lexicon at Concord Middle School. A dirty team is a team that has not only a teacher who is on multiple teams, but students were on multiple teams as well. Which is taboo in the teaming world. Because let's put it in, in a COVID context. When we have an all remote student who just kind of disappears off the grid, and this is what's trending across the world right now. And it is happening in a very reduced way in Concord. You know, the guidance counselor, the special educator, you know, the world language teacher, the English teacher, the science teacher, social studies. They're all in a room talking about the same strategies and how to get the kid and the family back engaged. They're all on the same page. And if there is a world language teacher or a math teacher who is not in that meeting, then against a middle school philosophy, you have to go find that teacher. You have to sit with that teacher and you have to get them on the same page. So just to give you a COVID perspective of just how important the teaming is and the work that we're doing right now in a COVID world.
Can I say something about the team meetings too? Would that be all right?
Please do.
Absolutely. Olive, just introduce yourself first.
Olive Bradford, I'm one of the two assistant principals and I'm in the sixth grade building, which is where I think it's immediately evident how important those teams are. So as is, is common in school districts, students spend the majority of their time with one teacher in elementary school. And then the transition up to sixth grade, those kids are learning how to code switch throughout the day to multiple adults and also working with a lot of more students than they're used to, you know, in addition to the academic rigor. So part of what goes on in the team meetings is everybody's talked about is working to, to make sure that similar, that, that students are sort of recognized, anybody who, who might need some additional support, but also building consistency across those classes so that when kids are walking into math, things are set up the same way. You know, things from how assignments are posted and how teams keep an assignment assessment calendar. So the kids don't have three tests on the same day to just bridge that, that gap between the one teacher and the multiple teachers. At least there's consistency amongst those adults who are meeting in those team meetings, which we're great to ask about to, to establish some of those norms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I also add one other huge benefit to teaming?
Great. Carrie, just introduce yourself.
Sorry. I'm head of the science department. And I've had the good fortune to work in several different middle schools, many of which had extremely strong teaming. And we were really able in those schools to reap the full sort of academic and curricular reward of very strong interdisciplinary work with the clean teams that you simply cannot do with dirty teams. And this is my first year on a clean team. For the past four years, I've been in, in multiple grades on multiple teams within the grades. So there's some years I was on six different teams, which gets a little crazy. You can't go to all those meetings. You cannot really know who to talk to about any particular child because you have no idea who their other teachers are. It could be any of the other teachers in the school. This year I'm on a clean team and for the first time ever, I'm able to teach scientific writing by first going to the one ELA teacher on my team and saying to her, so how have you introduced writing essays with evidence and, and explanation? Because I want to introduce that in science. And I was able to refer to, you just learned how to do this in English and look, now we're going to do it in science class. And the benefit of that kind of weaving between the disciplines is something you can really only do effectively in this kind of clean teaming structure. And I can't sing its praises highly enough.
And when we did tours of new buildings, new middle school buildings that are designed this way, they would remove their wall. You know, because the team is together in the design of the building. And the science lab, you know, in the English classroom, you know, a wall moved, you know. Whereas now, even though we're teaming in sixth and seventh, we have pretty much clean teams. We're moving that way in eighth grade next year. We're still clustered in the building by the design of the building and we're handcuffed by that. So Carrie's discussing, Carrie is giving you some wonderful examples of the benefits of teaming. But she's also within the science wing of PBD. So just to mention the connection to the design of the building.
Right.
I think that was brilliant and I think that you should expect to hear us capture your little video for something in the future. I'm not kidding. That I think, I think you have captured the essence of it that we wanted to hear tonight.
Right. Court, I know, may I for one second?
Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. It's Dawn again. For professional perspective, I have not seen a modern day middle school go down the junior high school path recently and any current projects we have, they're all teaming and from a, we call them half teams. I've actually never heard of dirty teams. We call them full and half teams. But from the perspective of working with other districts, it's ideal to have full teams and it's very much not ideal to have half teams or partial teams. So just from a design professional and perspective standpoint, that's what we often hear from other districts. And sorry about the background noise. My kids are having dinner. But just for perspective, that's the direction we're often given by districts is to go full teams. And on, on an MSBA project, you have to be sort of creative with how you divvy out the space. But to Justin's point, they're often together and very much in their own little world, except for sort of specials or elective PE, et cetera. From a spatial standpoint.
Okay. So we're at the six o'clock hour. Dr. Hunter, back to you.
Ready. So very quickly on lunch, we'll be aiming for three lunches by grade level. That is not all, we don't do that all the time, but that is the goal. So we'd want space for the 240 or so kids per grade. Just, you know, ref, just for point of reference, the current space really allows for a very traditional get in lunch line. Pick from the, you know, main entree options of the day. It's one, maybe two. Where we're more envisioning a scrambler environment, which is the jargon-y lingo for lots of several stations around with different types of food at different stations. The kids are moving about within the space, going to the station they want, maybe going to an à la carte area, getting a few things there. And forgive my typo, growth and independence is another portion of the goal here that it's a little less structured on purpose and forces them to sort of have to navigate that, but they also get a lot more choice in the environment. Technology, I'll just do that at a high level. These are the courses we currently offer in technology and have kids engaged in coding, digital literacy and applied tech and engineering. Those are key components of our programming for kids. And so that will need to get factored in. Again, pretty unusual that you'd have all of those or even a couple of those in a middle school available for all kids. The media center, and this is very high level, but we see this as a really integral element of the light, of the middle school that we want to be sure feels that way in a new school. We have a, a big collection. Part of that's because we have two schools and we will be merging those. The support the library gives to all the curriculum areas is really a key component of teaching and learning. Obviously there's research and information and materials provided, available to teachers, available to kids directly. It's, it's a really rich, fluid way to support and service classrooms, academics and students and staff. Justin has built some small maker spaces, another kind of jargon-y word where there's a lot of material available for kids to create. When he, when we say small, some, one of them's really, really small. So maybe a couple of kids can go in at a time. It's not unusual to see maker spaces in, in newer building designs. Perhaps it could be a fluid space that, you know, shares another purpose as well, but some creation space seems pretty important. Visual arts and again, 50,000 foot level, just in terms of how often our kids are engaged in art. Twice in the six-day rotation, which is a lot of art for an entire six through eight population to be engaged that whole three years. I think that the art teachers would do a much better job of describing this, but obviously there's a lot of painting, drawing, and then a lot of work with projects. Clay is a key component, which is why kilns have been something we've maintained even as we reconfigured and things like that. And we, we just want to be sure they've got space to, to maximize their vision. Performing arts, band, chorus, orchestra or general music for all kids. Dan's here as department chair and provided a lot of nice data to go with that. We have five teachers, which is extraordinary in a middle school supporting the program. 426 kids, which is half of the school population or even better. Practice and learning as well as performance being the key goals. And it should be noted, we have to consider equipment, storage and instruments. I know there is an interest for auditorium space as part of these programs. And that would be part of the discussion of what's available to them. In addition to the fact that right now the spaces aren't wonderful, but we have quite a bit of space. So we're still having discussion on going from what we have to what we build. So more to come on that.
Could I speak briefly on that? So just to touch on that briefly, I think Dawn said it best when like, sure, we'd love that ideal space, the size of the high school. But as we look to find that middle ground, I really see that, that midsize auditorium would offer us a lot of the same things. Some of our concerts, we'd still use CCHS somewhat and the ability to run our robust musical theater program that we do in the winter. That's really a program that captures that social emotional piece. When we saw that giant joy on our vision. I'm so feeling for those kids this year. They're missing out on that part of their identity. And that midsize space, when you do a show, you occupy a space for weeks at a time with transporting us to the streets of London or wherever it may be. It's not going to be easy to, to facilitate it in another facility for using CCHS. I don't see getting enough weeks to put on a performance of that level. And any smaller than a midsize auditorium, we'd have to really downsize and less concerts would take place there. But I'm not sure, this also fits in with extracurriculars that we'll talk about later, but I, you know, that midsize and even hearing, you know, the English department's comments, I think offers a great shared space.
Dan, I would get to this later anyway. So briefly now, a two-grade auditorium, something in the neighborhood of 500 students. How does that compare with the high school, the very tiered auditorium that we deal with right now up there? Do we know capacity at that one? I forget.
I want to say 580, something in that realm.
I was going to say 600. So.
So not, not wildly dissimilar. Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. PE and health, all kids participate twice in the rotation. Obviously we have two gyms now, one in each school. They're working on team sports, individual sports, lifetime sports and group problem solving. We are going to, going to need three spaces when they all come together because while we have two gyms, they're often a shared gym for two classes at a time. And equipment storage is another need we needed to name there. Health and family consumer science. In sixth and eighth grade, they have health either once or twice per cycle. In seventh, they go to family and consumer science twice. Currently, all of those are in separate spaces and that'll probably end up being part of our discussion too, just in terms of what health space, especially family and consumer science, given the equipment that she's been accustomed to and in both schools, actually. Kind of interesting. We've got such a plethora of that environment available in each building. Special education, and this really short changes special education because it's so, such a big part of our academic programming, but just at a high level, we do a combination of in-class support and pullout workshops. If you read the plan, you can see where our vision is to switch the ratios of those and really, really work more in-class support and less pullout. So that is part of the vision driving the space discussion. We do offer separate settings for English and math for kids who need more of a replacement environment in smaller group. You can see the list of services beyond that that we offer and provide. And then especially for the school committee who's heard so much talk about these specialized intense programs that we've been building for certain cohorts of kids. Right now, the middle school has the access program, social and emotional, what we are very aware of, especially as they, as the kids are coming up from the elementary schools, we need to build an autism-based program and life skills or combination of the two, but it's that population that is coming as well as a language-based program. So we know we have need for some bigger special ed spaces for kids who would be fluidly in and out of those rooms. But some kids may spend a more significant portion of the day there. Extracurriculars, again, kind of shortchanging this because I couldn't figure out how to list all the clubs. We have a really extensive program for after-school clubs. Parallels any high school level set of offerings. The kids are very actively engaged. A portion of that and Dan, before I go to athletics, Dan's music comment references some of the options the kids have for after-school and rehearsals and how all of his programs come together. In terms of athletics, intramural and interscholastic. And we are on the fields all around, around Sanborn constantly. Soccer, baseball, softball, field hockey. It totals up to six fields, which I think is almost deceiving if, until you really count it up, which Sarah, Sarah's here both as English chair and athletic manager. So she did a nice job of laying that out. And then of course basketball's inside and I've never seen so many kids play basketball, middle school kids. So it's a real popular option for kids in the winter. And clearly storage is still a discussion there. And these, I didn't get into any detail on, obviously the coming and going from the building needs to be talked through and part of the design process, our buses are our primary mode. We know we have walkers who live close to the building and we need to be sure they're safe. We know we have a parent transportation, not anywhere, eventually not at this level. Once we're out of COVID mode, but there's always a sizable group of parents who transport themselves and are growing numbers as you're all aware is the biking. COVID has, you know, really, really motivated families and kids to get on the bikes. As we suggested, they might give up their seats on the bus. And then just one last placeholder here, security. Every new school would need to be sure we're meeting our, our needs, the police expectations. And make sure we have, you know, things frankly, that we just don't have right now with visibility, security and safety cameras and a lot more. Just in terms of how the building is designed so that it is, is more, more secure. You know, the mods being probably top of that list of ways to have, struggle to have a fully secure building when kids are actually leaving the school all day long and coming and going like that. And then just finally, and this is meant to be general rather than specific. Next, we need to fine tune this educational plan as Court mentioned. The building committee and really our design team professionals are going to be leading us through these next pieces of determining the design process feasibility schematic design. And trying to really hone in on that footprint of what this building's going to look like. Community will be a part of that focus groups and forums along the way over the next, you know, two months or so. And at the right time and place, we need to reengage with this Concord Select Board and town leadership. As to the actual timing of a special town meeting. So those are my slides. And I'll turn it back to you, Court.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hunter. We can't declare what the select board will do, but I I would suggest that the COVID interruption of the better part of a year might in fact produce a year interruption in our original timetable. But we'll see. How much time we can make up. Any, any comments to wrap Dr. Hunter's presentation and that of our educators before we dive into the document? And then we'll have an opportunity to conclude with a review comments as well. Looking to my colleagues on the committee. If not, I have two screens open. One is the meeting and one is the document itself. We could each work our way through the document. I'll try to guide verbally or Dr. Hunter, if you want to do a screen share, we can do it that way. What I want to do is expedite the best way we can so that you and the team get as much by way of comment, question, recommendation as possible. Understanding that we're not going to be able to engage fully and thorough discussion or debate tonight. Rather what we want to do is make, make notes where we think the plan could use more attention.
Court, just a question process wise here.
Yes, please.
I, I kind of assumed that that was the presentation of the plan that Lori just gave us. Are you saying we're going through the detailed plan? I think she just gave us the overview of the.
She did. She did. And remember I prefaced this with, I didn't believe that was to be a, it was not to supplant our review.
Right. But so I'm just wondering what, what's the process that you're looking for? Are you looking to go through page by page? Or are you looking for people to say, oh, I have a question on this topic and we'll just address those questions topic by topic?
Both. If you have a question, let's target a page where it is a relevant question. That's the way I think it's going to be useful to the team authoring this thing.
Okay, so, so I just have an overall comment. I haven't read it twice or three times. I've read it. What I'm primarily looking for is, and I've read a few other educational plans regarding, regarding middle schools. And I'm looking for a sort of current and proposed, what we wouldn't do differently with different spaces in a new building. So I understand the teaming approach coupled with the every teacher would have their own classroom, which makes teaming more effective. I think that that's what I took away from Ms. Birkey. But I often do not find that in this document. So you know, regarding special education, how will we do RTI, RTE differently than we do now? Maybe using the sixth grade P buddy building is the best example we have with clean teams. And then I guess I would need a proposal or proposals again, what will we gain, lose with different sized auditorium? What would we gain, lose with different sized gymnasium? What will we gain, you know, on and on through the building administrative spaces, et cetera? So that I don't necessarily see that in this plan. I see a great good fantastic detail in many of our current programs. And I just, I kind of need to know what, what might we do differently in a new building with various options.
Are there other comments along those lines?
Yeah. Sorry.
So yes, to, to build on Cynthia's question. And also, so we're going from the original size of the building and we're trying to reduce it to meet the wish of the finance committee. So how do we, can we have an approximation of the space we are looking for, for every one of these components, for instance, the teaming, what, what is an approximation of the space that we are hoping to get? That is the compromise. And how is it different from what was originally proposed last year, for instance?
Joe, I'm going to turn to Heather in a moment, but let me give my own reply to it and others can correct if necessary. I think that very question is going to be answered yet again by our design firm. So we'll have those specifics. They're going to translate needs into spaces, to put it overly simply. Heather?
Yes, and I would agree with what you said. This, this is the ed plan that's used to create that space summary, Fatima. So so yes, that will definitely be coming. Thanks, Court. My comment, again, is just a high level on it overlaps with what Cynthia said a little bit. And with what you've said, Court, about let's really highlight the value of teams. I think that's really important. I think what both of, what's common in what both of you said is let's really highlight here what it is that's important about this building and what it is that might make it, let's say potentially more expensive than, you know, an MSBA building or a similar building somewhere else, or if we're asking for more funding, let's be very clear, why, right? What is the value of bringing to the table? So I think what you both said is very relevant and I feel like in this document, if there were a section at the beginning or towards the beginning, that's somewhat like an executive summary. That that might help with that to add something that says, okay, you know, spoiler alert, here are the big things that we are really focused on and here's why. And this is why we need the building that, that, you know, at some point will be presenting. So that again, just kind of my high level thought is some type of executive summary at the beginning to capture the biggest points that we need to make sure that everybody hears.
Tell them what you're going to tell them.
Right, yep. Yeah.
Alexa, anything?
No, I was, I was gonna, Heather, Heather stole my thunder. I think the same thing. I think if, exactly what she said. Here's what we need. Here's why we need it. And here's what it looks like in a design, like that simple three-step summary, I think, would knock it out of the park. Because it would just make it so clear.
Yeah.
I'll echo to some degree what Cynthia said in the following way. I think I know what in this ed plan is current that we would be supporting in a new facility and what is potential or made possible. But I think I know that because I think I pay more attention to schools than many other people. Meaning I think we do have an obligation to call out more specifically what protects the current programming and what is now newly capable or predicted. Really make that stark and clear to the people who will ultimately critique this in our, in our town.
And one more thing, Court, that I just wanted to, I guess, follow up with or finish off my comment was in addition to the, to the additions that we're kind of all suggesting, my other thought is that what we have here I actually, I think is incredible and very helpful. So I don't want to take away from that. And that's not just to say, oh, it's good, but let's add. It's to say, I think this is incredible and there's a lot of really, really good detail in here. And so when we're saying, let's, let's highlight this or that, I think a lot of that is highlighted. Or it is covered at least in, in great detail. I, I love the detail that the various areas go into. Down to the point of showing us what kind of storage we'll need and how much in each area. And so I think everything that we have here is critical and very helpful. And so my comment is a matter of let's make sure we take that and kind of like, you know, highlight the, the big points at the beginning. But I just don't want to miss the fact that I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the detail, I think, is extremely useful.
I have a quick question. Because I remember in 2000, I don't even know what year it was at this point, I guess 2019, when this all sort of kicked off. There was, there were so many public meetings about the space soliciting citizen feedback, citizen input and all of that. As sort of when, when Cynthia talked about, you know, that her sort of gain, lose analysis of the proposed spaces. Do you think as we pare down the plan and ultimately will likely have to eliminate something that might have been prioritized to a certain constituency that it might be helpful to sort of, do you think that we're going to need to explain, I guess, why the plan can't include certain things, you know, so that stakeholders have a full understanding of what was prioritized and why?
Three-word answer, yes, many times. And I don't mean to be flip about it. I mean, and that's okay. I think that's our obligation. I think we are going to have to reach out to many audiences many times. You know, Dawn made it very clear and she's right. We begin with the ideal and then we try to make it real. And then we explain the gap between the two. And make sure it's something that we can live with. And, and to that, to that point, I think you're going to be hearing later this week that the two subcommittees, the design subcommittee and the communication subcommittee are going to be re-engaging the community on some of these questions before the building committee comes up with the answers that then require what you describe as more explanation how we got there.
Court, can I, is it okay if I jump in?
Yes, please, Courtney.
Sorry, I don't know if I'm able to jump in or not. I just know that in talks of having a lower budget means obviously less square footage and there's been a lot of talk of shared spaces for teachers. So if I could just be a teacher voice and talk about the great value that I see in teachers having their own room. I look at a middle school model as being very similar to an elementary model where students come into the same classroom every day for each of their content areas. The walls are decorated with things that support that particular content area. The teacher is able to have her supplies all in one place, which leads to organization on the teacher's part. All of her manipulatives, everything she uses for that class is in one space. So you're not going to different classrooms or having to pick up your stuff and leave and gather it and come back. Which, you know, can be for someone who traveled between the buildings for 18 years. It's, it's really difficult to run an efficient, you know, effective class when you're sort of running from place to place. So you know, if there's any way that we could relook at teachers having their own space.
Well, it won't be a relook because we haven't stopped looking at it.
Okay.
And a few people on that committee have worn the same pair of shoes you just described.
Yeah.
No kidding. But we won't get into that tonight. What I will appeal to you for Courtney, and I'm only speaking for myself, not the school committee or the building committee is whatever we collectively can produce, I hope we look at it through the lens of gain, not a loss of some ideal. I don't think we're going to get everybody's ideal. But I think we're going to try to preserve as much of the educator's ideal as we possibly can. And those pieces that this process doesn't ultimately support fully. I still hope is look through it through the lens of gain in, in the way of a new middle school.
If I could piggyback.
Superior to what we have. I'm sorry, who was speaking up? Forgive me.
This is Paul Crowley, I'm the F Chair at CMS. Just to piggyback for one moment on what Courtney said. There's also an element of time on learning for kids that play into that because when people are, when the kids are walking into your room, that's already set up and they have a routine to follow. The learning starts right away as opposed to some number of kids already being in the room before the teacher starts and then that, that whole process having to be corralled. There's a time on learning element that benefits kids from that also. So that's just real quick. I wanted to point out.
And for the non-educators in the room, educators spend not a small amount of time learning how to handle what Paul is referring to as transitions and trying to minimize what they are and maximizing the, the potential to get engaged quickly and move on through the course of the day. Because those minutes here and there accumulate, Paul, don't they?
If I could just, not to beat a dead horse, but just jump in as well. This is Sarah Okers. I'm the English department chair. And just want to echo what all of my fellow educators are saying. And I too have, I have shared a room and taught multiple grades for the past 20 years. And there's something about the social emotional piece that when the space is yours, the kids come in and you create this little home within your classroom for the students. And that really can't be undersold, how important that is. And even just a simple example of logistics and saving time. If I'm performing 12 Angry Men in my classroom, but the math class has just happened before that, it takes a lot of time to clear the space, get out the costumes, get out the props. Reconfigure the space for the math teacher who's coming in. This year I share a room with orchestra. She's got to move all of her stuff out, get all the instruments in. We get the instruments out. So it's just, there's a lot that seems superficial that really isn't in terms of just the social emotional impact on students and on teachers.
And if I, if I could just add, it's I've kind of been waiting to say this, but it seems like the appropriate time. That if we're talking about flexible 21st century learning, something that we highlighted in the social studies plan was just seating. Just the ability to be flexible with our seating between whether it's collaborative group work, whether we're putting on a production in class, you know, whether we have projects going on. And last year was the first year in 19, I've been very lucky that I've taught in my own classroom, pretty much my whole career. But last year as an apartment chair, I did share a classroom. And by no fault of anybody else, because the other teacher was trying to have effective teaching and learning also. But I would have everything set up. I disappear for one class period, come back and the entire room was in, you know, basically everything I had set up, I needed to reset up. And I think that idea of lost time, you know, if we're, if we're really thinking about kids and we're thinking about their learning going forward, I really think we do need to think strongly about sharing of classrooms. It was something that social studies teachers felt very strongly about when they reported back to me. So, thank you.
And I think I'll echo what Court said. I, I think we're going to do everything to try to minimize those transitions. And not, it might not be perfect. But I, I think, I'm sure the designers will do everything in their power. They, they know that's one of the most important things. You don't want people, you know, going up and downstairs or going, you know, the other. you know, going up and downstairs or going, you know, the other side of the floor, even leaving their team area. But we're just trying to figure out a way to address all of these things that people want, which are incredibly valid and I know very important and result in a much more successful teaching experience and therefore, you know, you're much more successful as educators. So I think this is why we're having this discussion. I think it's fantastic that we're having this dialogue about this. Now, that's what we need to continue. Because nothing has been decided and I don't want anybody to think that is the case. So I, I think that's why we need to continue the conversation.
If possible, sorry.
Yeah, just very quickly, Courtney, I, I think it's appropriate to repeat what Dr. Hunter said. This is a town project. And this is a school committee meeting. So do we have a role to play? Yes. But it'll be the building committee and ultimately town meeting that makes the decision. So we don't want to imply to anybody that we're making decisions, we don't have the power to make. We want to make that clear. Because many people, many citizens assume this is a school project and it's a school that is a town project. We need to remind people and add that caveat to it. Courtney, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I actually was just wondering if I could share my screen just for a minute because I, I think it would be really beneficial to show, for example, the different manipulatives that world language classes use. And I know that other teachers do the same.
With apologies, we're going to say yes, but make it brief and ask Dr. Hunter.
That's totally fine.
Privilege.
Courtney, try it.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, I have it. Just very quickly, because I, I do think it's beneficial to kind of see, you know, in a world language class, for example, we do do the city project, which I know that everyone is aware of, and we put the city down on the floor. I mean, in a shared space, I'm not sure if we would be able to do this project again. We do invite parents in to come and see the project. So it's a huge sort of community building event, but just coming down to storage, to just look at all of the different manipulatives that we use. We each have our own library in class, so the students can do free involuntary reading. But then I just wanted to show you our storage closet because we do use an incredible amount of stuff that we teach with. We have hula hoops, we have pool noodles, we have pictures that we put on the wall, we have all of these games. So I, I'm, I'm concerned with the idea of sharing space and putting all of these things on a cart and going from room to room. And then in just looking at a world language class, we post all kinds of vocabulary and functional chunks on the wall and we actually use this to teach from. So this, we would not be able to, to replicate if we were going from room to room. So I just, that's it. I just wanted to show those few things. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I think Kristin Olson, the lead in the architectural firm SMMA, knows why we picked the best firm possible. She's got her work cut out for her, don't you, Kristin?
Real quick, just to echo, I think Courtney and Sarah's comments. Right before Sarah was sharing a room with orchestra, I was sharing that same room with orchestra. And I think as we look at sort of how we pare down things, you know, in music, our instrumental teachers are shared with the elementary. We're going to have space sharing. We're aware of that. It makes sense for us to share space with them. It doesn't make sense for them to be in an English room. And when we make those tough decisions, I think it makes sense for foreign language to be sharing space with foreign language, to have you in a cart going across the building. This worst case scenario, I think all of us would agree with that. And so much of it comes down to schedule and, and it's hard to find that balance. And I'm glad it's not my job.
So given the hour, I want to honor our, our goal of a seven o'clock wrap. I'm going to suggest a, a different format. And I want to thank everybody for being so ready to engage with this. But I want to bring us back to our committee because we've got the charge of reexamining this in a week and hopefully giving it formal approval, which I think will be a significant step among many in this entire huge process. I'm going to suggest a different format and that is that rather than waiting through page by page, we ask each member to take a couple of minutes with any specific comments they want to make about items in the document. And then we'll go around again, among the five committee members for any concluding remarks that we want the, the authors, the team on this document to consider. Recognizing that it goes to the full building committee Thursday morning and then comes back in the form of an agenda item on Friday for next Tuesday. So it's quite a crunch and hopefully we don't have too many unanticipated issues this week so that people who want to do this work can do this work on our behalf. I'm ready to go at any point with a few comments with this caveat, anything that I think is minor. I'm going to put it in the form of an email to Dr. Hunter. I think you're the lead on this document, Dr. Hunter.
I am.
Okay. Is that an acceptable approach? I'm hoping it is. We don't have time for much else. Would anybody want to hold forth from the school committee on comments or questions, not that required debate or discussion, but rather that you think need to be flagged for attention by the team authoring this?
Go ahead, Court.
I will be, I will go ahead. So we don't have page numbers on this, but I'm going to identify them as best I can. When I look at page seven, there's a reference that the under advantages of proposed grade refers to the, the benefits being overshadowed by the challenges of a one-year experience, which might be misinterpreted by the casual reader as to say that was a mistake. And I don't think that was your intention. Further down on that same page, I think we're going to have to address projected school population drops in the future. Our 700 is 684. Our own numbers say it's going to drop further. And I think we need to be really, really direct and upfront about that that might be so, but that we don't really know. When I look at page nine, I would want the school committee to engage in a discussion with the superintendent and the finance director during the budget process as to the likelihood of new FTEs being required when dirty teams become clean teams, which looks like it's going to happen in the near future. On that same page nine, there's a link to SMMA, but it's not called out as a link. Let's identify that source. And I think we can look a little further on the same page at the implications of programming and budget around the electives being taught by classroom teachers. I'm learning more about that than I once knew. Moving very quickly through.
Will you be able to send this to me? I can't write as fast as you're going. Okay, perfect.
Exactly. So back to Cynthia's comment about what would be same, what would be different. On page 11, there's a reference to the creativity required of our teachers. Quote, "In finding spaces for students to work." And so on. And I, I hope we could call out how some of that might be remedied now and how some of that is going to be perhaps remedied in a, in a different, better building. See if there's anything else at an even higher level to finish up quickly here. It's certainly a lot of work, no question about it. I would ask for some editing on the document. I think when we describe some, some content areas with general information about major content expectations. And then in other subject areas, we get very granular, right down to the number of this and that in an inventory makes it look like an uneven document to me. I'm not sure we need that level of, of detail about, for example, inventory or what, what it means to teach somebody mean or average. I think we could stay at a slightly higher level. It might be useful to the document. I'm hoping I can make everything else known independent. On on page 23, the enrichment program. I, I would hope we can translate that into what that means for facility needs. If in fact, there's anything unique about the facility needs, or is it simply using found space in the building that's designed for the core five subjects and the, the specials. And when we look at page 26, discussion of proposed changes to planning time and number of spaces is ongoing. So I think we need to be engaged in that conversation, all of us, so we understand more about it. There's also on that page a reference to adult learning space, which I think could, could benefit from a little more clarification. I would hope that on page 29, when we talk about computer labs and automated libraries, we understand that in the context of every student being furnished a computer. How that works together because I'm, I'm not clear on it. Perhaps others are not as well. I'll let the rest go for now in the interest of time, but that's, I think, the kind of attention that the document would benefit from as it continues to, to get some work. And in closing, for my remarks, I'll simply say what's been said a couple of times before. If teaming is the north star for all of this, let's do a superb job of, of explaining why that makes this facility necessarily different. And, and a bigger ask for the community than might otherwise be the case. I'll turn to others. Looking at my screen, Cynthia, anything to, to add that you wouldn't want to put just directly in a memo to the superintendent?
So I took away that RTI was a key component and something that has proven to really improve outcomes. And I'm just wondering, are we looking for different spaces or types of spaces in the new building for RTI and RTE? And then perhaps provide a little more detail. How often and how large are the groups, the classes for these RTI, RTE? Do they differ dramatically? Perhaps I, I wouldn't be surprised if they do. And yeah, and then I just would, would like to know about space requirements to enhance this, if that's a proposal. They had team staffing requirements with this, would that require more, more FTEs or? And then they already mentioned the current proposed and sometimes it's there and sometimes it's not. Sometimes there's not specific in the proposed. So that's, you know, if we have something proposed that we would like to do differently, I think we need to call out exactly what we would like or pretty close. So that's it. I might, I will probably send with more specific questions to Dr. Hunter as well.
Okay. And I would urge all of us, if we're going to do that sooner, not later.
Yes.
She's, she's under considerable time pressure here. I'll turn to Heather if I might, Heather.
Yeah, sure. I, I don't have other specifics. I tried to follow all of your comments, Court, and I see some of them. I actually am pretty happy with the level of detail. So I guess I would just kind of like to balance that with that. I don't want to see Dr. Hunter having to go back and, and pick this apart and take out a lot of sections. If some have a little more detail than others, it actually doesn't bother me much. I feel like any detail is helpful. So, so high level thoughts are, I think it's very good. And again, my one thought was let's add an executive summary and pull out the highlights. And then I, I actually think it's looking pretty good from there.
Thank you. Alexa, could we turn to you, please?
Sure. I'm, I'm wondering, is, is the level of detail on all the stuff at the end, speaking to storage requirements? Because in which case it could be helpful to know. I mean, it's, it's a lot of stuff. So I think part of that can in fact translate to substantial storage needs, whether it's manipulatives or instruments or whatever. That was just sort of my initial thought that maybe that level of detail is in fact helpful as we look to accommodate all that stuff. Yeah, I, I mean, I went through this document thoroughly and I have a ton of notes, but I, I think, yeah, I'm more than happy to just email them. I think they're all little nitpicky things here and there. I think the top level idea of the executive summary and really sort of going into that, the needs for the teaming is probably the biggest thing that I think could be flushed out. Other than that, I think everything else is minimal. Thanks, guys.
Fatima? If you would, please.
Yes, I think everyone covered the thoughts that I had on the documents. I, I would again emphasize that it can be concise in some areas. Because for me, going through the detail in the curriculum, for instance, I, it didn't, it wasn't clear the connection between that detail and what we are trying to achieve, why that we are, this is for a building project. I didn't see the relevance of a lot of that, that information, which is wonderful and valuable, just not for this specific purpose. I think in terms of also the inventory, I wonder whether it can be, instead of inventory, we can assess the space that we need for all those that material, whether it's word language or music. I, I wonder if that's something that would be better. Otherwise, I, I agree with much of the remarks that were made so far.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hunter? We have tried to cover this as best our two hours would allow. I want to thank you and thank the middle school educators who have joined us tonight. I think this has been really critically important to us to hear directly. I, I will say, I believe the building committee and Heather's on it as well. She, she might be able to affirm this. I believe that Dr. Hunter has been a very effective ambassador representing you on the, the, the points you've made. But I think it's well and good that you reinforced them the way you did. Do I have that right, Heather?
They didn't surprise you, no, they didn't surprise you. Court, I wonder if Kristin Olson's here, our lead design designer. I wonder if you might give her just a minute or two. I
Yeah, certainly I will.
You might want a couple of comments before we get off, that's all.
I've introduced Kristin by name. Kristin is the lead from SMMA, a firm known to us from high school work. Now engaged with us on the town's work on the middle school project. I am looking around my screen and let's see if I can find Kristin. So there you are. Hi, good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. And also your colleagues from Hill International are here as well tonight, I know. So you, you have the floor, Kristin, to introduce yourself and make any remarks you, you care to make.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for inviting us. It's really great to hear this all firsthand, certainly. My name's Kristin Olson, I'm project manager and architect with SMMA. And I think the one item that I heard from a lot of you, so first of all, all of the comments are very valuable and, and it's great to hear that feedback even delivered to Lori for, for our information. I think the biggest takeaway and clarification I wanted to add is relative to the ask. I think the biggest takeaway and clarification I wanted to add is relative to the ask for the school department to insert any space requests. We actually, and it is very common to pull back from that. The educational plan should be focused around the type of space that is needed to deliver the education. So I think one of the members had mentioned is, is the teaching that you do, a wet type of environment, it requires something that can be wet like a maker space, or is it more of a quiet learning type of a media center teaching example? So, so we need to know how the teaching is done so that we can translate it into space because we may offer some creative ideas that, that the school might not have thought of. And so we really need that flexibility to hear, you know, about the small lectures that happen or the, the small performances, because then that will inform us in how we develop the spaces. So I, I think that I just want to make sure that the expectation is set that you'll see how is being taught and, and what kind of space would assist in that teaching. But we, we definitely don't want any rooms to be named in the educational plan.
If I hear you correctly, you're describing what will continue to be a very iterative process.
Yes, and actually I should clarify that the typical process, once we have the educational plan and translate that into spaces and get the buy-in and do all the work with you to confirm the approach. The design team actually takes the ed plan at the end and puts in a design response. So to each of those sections within the ed plan, where it says, this is how we like to do teacher planning, the design team will take all of the work that we do over the next few months and then say, this is how we translated this request into the space. So you really do have a side by side, but it is from the appropriate roles.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we know we have the large building committee meeting on Thursday and we have more ed plan work to do over, over the next week. I hope this has moved the process forward. I trust it has. The proof will be in the pudding. And thank you for the grace with which you heard our questions, comments and their recommendations. And thank you for putting the words that Laurie has conveyed very, very effectively in your own mouths, on your own Zoom screen, so we could hear you directly. And I want you to know that we in our work with the building committee will, I believe, accurately and faithfully represent your, your opinions and your, your needs. And needless to say, you've got our pledge that we'll do our very best with it. With that, hearing no other comments, do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second, and those in favor, roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Aye.
Missed that, aye.
Rainy, aye.
All right. And thank you all for the work that you did to get us to this session this evening. Really important, really beneficial. Thank you all. Take care. Be safe.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.